Hello everyone and welcome to another exciting episode of Dungeons dinners or Dungeon dinners and Dragon dice. One day I will get through this intro.
Dragon drinks.
Dragon drinks. Oh my god. You know what? We're gonna start over. Hi, my name's Chris Mansfield. I'm your DM for Dungeon dinners and Dragon drinks. One day I will get through an intro without screwing it up.
Don't lie to the people.
Hey, I have the power of edit. I can lie as much as I want. They'll never know.
You are right, Chris.
See?
And attractive.
Seamless. Absolutely seamless. You'd never know I had a gun to Matt's head. As I said, I am your lovely DM for this foray. Tonight I am having a McCallan edition number four. And we're having chicken tenders and curly fries.
Christopher, first of all, before we get into the direction, it's the year of our Lord 2024. Say it right. We're having chicken tendy and curly fries. This is for the internet.
Is for the internet.
Ah, for the internet.
For the internet. I'm Matthew and I have avoided. What does YouTube make you call it now? Self-unaliving for yet another week. Something, someone said something like that.
For those of you in the poll, you've just lost five dollars. Uh, and you are playing who?
I am playing, let me check my little black book, which is actually red.
Right, you better get your hands off my black book. I paid for that.
I am playing Luke Finnegan. I keep wanting to say Finnegan, and that is wrong.
Hello, I am Web. I am eating the chicken tenders and the fries with my drink being Cherry Coke. And then I am playing, uh, no, he's Rhenusk. I'm Rogar. The problem is both of our names start with an R and we're both half-orcs in nature.
I am Web and I don't know who I am.
Do, do any of us truly know who we are? In all honesty?
I don't know. I apparently know I'm the DM. I just don't know where I am.
That's fair. See, you know where you are. Well, now you know who you are now.
I'm Jack. He pointed at me while I had a mouthful of tendy.
Thank you.
Hey, it's, it is far from the worst thing. I pointed at you while you had a mouthful of it.
Why are you shaking your head like you haven't died down too? There be all you want. They hated Jesus because he told the truth too.
You man just compare yourself to Jesus?
I do that all the time.
Yeah, but I'm.
Are you new? Don't worry. You'll end up like him too.
I'm kinda hoping for it.
Trust me, you don't want it. The crutches are a pain trying to travel and get aroused in pain right on the kneecap.
We don't. I get a free donkey every time I go to a new town. What do you want?
You, you gotta love walking in town instantly getting ass.
But think of all the bread and fish you have to make.
Yeah, I had to make one fish and what was it? Two loaves of bread? And then I have infinite fish and bread. Where's the downside? What are you on about?
Think about how old that fish is gonna get.
Thank you. Two fish and three loaves of bread.
Anyway, um, I, yeah, I finished my curly fries. I'm eating my chicken tendies and I have acquired a new sixer of Jack Daniels Down Home Punch Country Casket.
This is the part where. This is the part where I'll remember our listeners. We're not sponsored, but we are open to it.
We're not sponsored, but our morals are cheap and flexible. Speak for yourself.
If any of you own like a local brewery, we will happily drink and pretend to like whatever you throw at us.
Please not throw it at us in cans. We prefer bottles.
Why?
No, they aren't paying us. Don't shout them out.
No, what the, who are you? Why are you shouting them out if we're not getting paid? Just stop telling that. Sh- shades, edit that out. You can tell the people how good the beer is after they pay us. Tell them how good the beer is.
Or at least get me drunk on the cheap.
First you get the sugar, then you get the money, then you get the bitches.
This is the internet. We've had the, we've had that the entire time.
Different, different, different kind of bitches.
Oh, okay.
Hi, Megan. I am eating the bonus wings.
Unclean.
Along with drinking a Pepsi because I don't really drink.
Unless.
And I'm playing Nim.
And hi, I'm John. I play Jen and I'm drinking a Purple Fanta.
Because someone here needs to fill stereotypes.
Oh yeah.
Hey, I'm the only one not eating fried chicken right now.
Well, we give you watermelon, but you die bitch.
It's because you're, it's because very common to you, you're late.
Wait, 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 wait. You can't eat watermelon?
Proof God has a sense of humor.
Yeah, fucking, that is, I thought I had it rough. You poor son of a bitch.
I developed an allergy to melons in my twenties. That means long enough so that I know what I'm missing.
But too young to be able to enjoy the glory that is prosciutto wrapped melon.
Okay, I've never had that. And Chase, I have a suggestion for next time. And when I say suggestion, let me remind you, I know how to make a nuclear weapon. Uh, CIA, ignore that. That's a joke.
I have prosciutto and watermelon in the fridge right now.
Oh, you can't see it because of the table, but I'm hard as a rock.
I can because now my glass is leaking. This is a quick reminder to all our listeners. This is an R-rated part podcast.
We work.
Bordering, bordering on an NC seventeen. And that is a hard border. So last session, uh, we started our harvest festival. Hooray! Fun and good times. The.
How many star points have we gotten for the cards so far?
Ah, good times are happening. The crops are brought in. Peddlers are here and wizard. There's a candy man who literally made it rain sugar for a brief time.
Well, the candy man can't.
He sprinkles it with love. Uh, and then someone got shot in the shoulder with a crossbow.
No, no, before that, um, our archnemesis learned that you don't mess with a wizard's wagon.
That is true. Topo decided he was going to try and rob a wizard's cart. Topo was quickly reminded that he is functionally retarded.
As he was.
As he was.
I'm just, I'm gonna stop you right there, okay? I've known, I've been friends with legitimate medically diagnosed retards. I'm not saying that as a, I'm not saying that as a slur. Back then, that was the medical term.
That's true.
And I am insulted on their behalf for you to compare Topo to them.
That's so much better.
That's true.
They learn with enough negative reinforcement. Topo lost fourteen to four to six-year-olds and he thinks he's still gonna fuck around.
To a single.
No.
No, no, y'all jumped him. Y'all bought.
But I'm like, all of us, only two of them got teeth.
That's still, two is still more than one.
And what, what's Shannon's character? A gnome?
That's true.
No, it wasn't, it wasn't Shannon's character. It was Matt's character.
It was, it was Matt.
Nerd. It was the, the half dragonborn. Fair enough. And the fucking math nerd.
Perfect aim.
Like the quarterback knocks a couple of teeth out of your face. Fair enough. Shouldn't have touched the quarterback's girlfriend. I'm gonna do it again, but whatever. But when the captain of the chess club cold clocks your ass, you need to sit down and ask yourself some very uncomfortable questions.
That is very fair. And I made sure.
Where is that pawn now?
That underling will fear me for the rest of his life.
Alright, yeah. Uh, Topo is now planted in Rhenusk's field.
Enjoy, enjoy my teeth marks for the rest of your life, bitch.
And yet we ended with a, a family feud evolving into outright hostility.
Between the Harises and the Jobin.
Yep.
Well, um, what, what, what's the fuck's your character again? Who, who?
My mother, um.
Dragonborn?
Yes.
Kava.
Yes, you're, well, uh, while Kava watched on as the eldest of one of the families got shot in the shoulder with a crossbow bolt. Yep. We pick up where we left off.
I have a very important question before we go on. How much drinking has happened so far?
Oh, not a ton. This is like, yeah, this is like maybe two hours into this.
Oh, oh, something must have, like if we were, you know.
Oh yeah, that, uh, that, uh, you know, son and daughter were caught holding hands again.
That's just a little much for going straight across the ball.
Oh no.
Brass knuckles, sure.
It just kept evolving. The entirety of each family was there and insults were called. It was great.
I keep having flashbacks to Klaus movie.
Alright.
I can never hear the word Klaus again without immediately going, oh, I am Klaus.
I am Klaus.
Oh.
I am Klaus.
I am Boilow.
Yeah, right. Uh, no, it's cute. It's my pacing notes. Those didn't work out. Uh, but yes, the eldest Jobin, uh, currently has a crossbow bolt sticking out of his shoulder. Uh, several other members of the Jobin family are now drawing weapons. Uh, steel or iron is clearing sheaths. And, uh, several members of the Harith fam, or the Harris family, Harith. There's a flashback to a good time.
Sam!
Essence of Sam.
You said eldest Jobin, so like their father or grandfather?
Eldest, the son of the family.
No.
Oh, you mean eldest isn't elder?
Yes, the Eldest.
So at our age, an old man just got shot.
Yep.
They're trying to get our ages. There's probably a couple of full grown adults who are like, someone just shot that fucking old guy.
Then Granny Mags.
Nobody, nobody is older than Granny Mags. But yes, um.
She's older than the earth.
Roderick Jobin is the oldest man in the village.
How old is he?
None of you know.
He's ancient because we're four to six. He's over forty. He is ancient.
So what you're telling me is someone grabbed a crossbow, took a pot shot at Belgarath.
Yep.
Oh.
She, uh, it's a reference to a book series that I'm extremely disappointed in Megan especially for not realizing because I've talked to you about it several times.
What is it?
Uh, the Belgarian and the Malorian were the two series. Excellent books, very generic plot, but the, the book series is really all about the characters.
Yeah, I've never heard of it and you haven't.
I have in fact, because the will and the word is one of my favorite magic systems. By the way, Belgarath also had his own standalone book.
Yes.
Belgarath the Sorcerer. Yeah. Hers was kinda mid to me. If only because they focused way too much on like one section, like.
Yeah, but it was from Polgar's book. Belgar, it's shown in the books all the time. Belgarath always takes the long view. Polgarra focuses on the specifics.
I get it. I get it. Anyways, uh, chaos erupts as weapons are drawn. Um.
And which person is it that's trying to herd the tiny children away from the house?
Be, uh, Kava, the, I think the dragonborn, uh, and your friend's mother. Uh.
Where is my mom? Do I know where my mom is likely to be at right now?
Uh, right now, no one knows where anyone is. Pure.
Jenny is here.
Pure chaos and confusion have descended upon the field. Pure chaos and confusion have descended upon the field.
Quite literally.
And all you see is a mixture of legs, arms, the view between it of people shoving, hitting each other. The town is getting drawn into this. You can't even really make out words as you reflect upon this in the coming days, weeks, and very likely years. As your first real brush of what, oh, this is what a brawl really is. All you'll ever get is flashes of someone knocking you over and then you being hauled back up. Um, the bustle and jostling of legs and hands trying to kinda get where they're trying to go.
The poor little gnome just on the basis of moving aggregates in sand and whatnot, just ends up riding people's shoulders around the brawl.
Oddly the safest.
We're dodging people at waist height. He's dodging knees.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Like, you, you ever shook sand with small rocks in it? The sand, the rocks will always slowly work their way up to the top. That's what I'm saying for him. He starts off dodging feet. Next thing you know, he's riding shoulders.
Uh, you all eventually, like, reality kind of settles after a time and you all are sitting in the tavern. Uh, in one of the rooms, uh.
Were you beat up?
You are battered, but not really beaten up. Like you've been jostled, you've been knocked down and picked back up. Like more than once.
Like no one took a swing at the kids, but we have been tripped or bumped.
Yeah, more than once you were just picked up and bodied out, you know, carried bodily out of this ruckus. Yeah.
And now I'm just picturing that there is a home for battered.
Alright, and, uh, one of our other players is here. Go ahead and do your thing.
Hello, I'm Shannon. I will be playing, uh, the part of Levic and I am drinking Code Red and Wild Cherry Pepsi.
Wild Cherry Pepsi is apparently the drink of the night. We got three different people drinking. Pepsi is the far superior soda. Don't at me. Coke is trash.
Funnily enough.
Cherry Coke is amazing and vanilla is even better.
Cherry Coke is decent. Vanilla Coke is alright. Cherry Pepsi bodies all of them.
No, Cherry Dr. Pepper bodies all of them.
When you can get it.
Yeah.
It's, it, it, it's removed from the running for doping, okay?
Yeah, it's, the strawberry Dr. Pepper is a terrible substitute.
Strawberry and cream. Who thought to put that in the Dr. Pepper? The one that smells overwhelmingly of cherry more than anything else.
Honestly, give me a strawberry cream soda. And just that without the Dr. Pepper and that's fine.
Yeah.
I would rather eat sand than like.
No, 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 no. Not, not cream soda. Strawberry and cream soda is strawberry and cream that he stopped him up is strawberry and whipping cream.
That's fair.
Not like a cream, like cream soda is cloyingly sweet.
There are a couple brands that do it right, but I can never remember what they are and I always guess wrong.
It's just like life. I know there's a way to.
Because that is like.
Ginger ale. I don't like milk.
That is, that, that's a fair opinion.
I also hate Dr. Pepper.
That is a less fair opinion. Get out of my house.
And I refuse to drink any cherry soda at any store.
Get his legs.
We don't like what we don't hunt, but it scares us. And this bastard is mysterious.
We're, we're, we're writing it back in. We're writing it back in. So, uh, yeah, you all are in this room kind of in a mixture of shell shock, a little bruised. And just like sheer adrenaline running through all of you. Kava is standing at the door, not facing you. With that look, yeah, with that kind of tension that you especially, uh, would recognize. I gotta remember your character's name because I really need to start reporting referring to all of you with Rogarth. Um, that you especially Rogarth would recognize as the. I am three seconds away from just literally biting something's head off.
And I'm guessing this is what the situation was. No one expects the brawl to spill into buildings, but if it does, she is here.
Especially not into this building that has the noted, you know, former priest in it. Whose armor and axe are prominently displayed on a wall.
Were they still there when we got in? I would assume he's not gonna bring the axe.
Uh, go ahead and make me a wisdom check with disadvantage. See if you noticed it. Go for it. Anyone who wants to, uh, trying to remember a detail from this. Can make a wisdom check with disadvantage.
Cause I would imagine he's, he's not gonna drag the, the axe out into the brawl obviously, but I could absolutely see his dad. Grabbing the full plate armor and just having a blast.
Uh, if you're trying to recall anything specifically from this entire thing, it's going to be a wisdom check with disadvantage. Let me know what you were trying to recall. It's not something you have to do. But if you are trying to pick out a detail.
So that will be a, so seventeen minus three is fourteen.
Fourteen?
So that was two natural ones, so that's a negative six.
Press the button, press the.
The armor is still.
Any button, because it'll stop it from tipping further and it will hit my window.
Okay, there you go.
My, my automatically reclining chairs just tried to destroy my home and kill Jack.
Again, this is not the first time.
They've tasted human blood, okay? I'm not responsible for their actions anymore. Let it go. Let it go. Alright, uh, what was yours?
Uh, a double nat one.
The armor was still there, but the axe was gone. I'm scared for daddy.
Rogarth remembers nothing.
So that was actually a negative two.
Congratulations. You won't need therapy.
Yet. You're just like, something happened and now I'm here.
I remember dodging.
You even remember that? You're just like, a thing happened. Now I'm here.
Oh wait, that's every day.
Levic is just like, well, I'm in a different room now. Cool.
Actually, that makes perfect sense. It was so, aside, it's weird getting on their shoulders for a minute, but aside from that, it was just a lot of people around me. I was dodging feet. Now I'm here. What is everyone freaked out about?
You had, uh, Matt, what did you?
Fourteen.
Uh, with a fourteen, um, yeah, the armor and axe were both still on the wall.
He doesn't need them.
Anyone else is making.
I, I win.
What were you trying to recall?
I was trying to recall, um, what happened to like, uh, old man, um, ju, like the one who got shot with the crossbow.
Old Man Jobin?
Yeah.
Um, he, he, uh, with a sixteen, you saw him being like carried off fighting the entire time.
Gravel, we got to stop the bleeding. I got time to bleed later. This ass is to kick.
Wait, like, fighting to defend himself further or fighting to get back to the fight?
You're not sure. You especially because you didn't make a roll.
Oh no, it was, he chose, I was asking for her memory.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I'm not trying to.
Nope.
Fine.
Yep, one. Um, yeah, you all are in this room now, uh, kinda on that lovely adrenaline come down.
There's so many people, so much, so much fighting, so, so like.
Where did they get a crossbow?
I want a crossbow. Do you think they let me have one? Do you think Mama let me?
No. Do you think your family can afford one? My family can't afford. The crossbows are expensive if you don't make them yourself. My dad showed me the figures for it once and.
Just like that sheer, like, I poured nitrous into an ADHD kid.
You're just going. Yeah, because he, he just got focused on, how did they get a crossbow?
And now crossbows.
Yeah, it's like, this is how we'll defend ourself.
That is a very good point. Do we still have our candy?
Uh, checking, who's checking their pockets for their candy? Ever make me a perception check?
If I remember, we had bags. We each had bags.
Yep. We found the candy man cart.
Oh, we made it.
No.
No, we bought it fair and square.
Well, that is about the most either useful or useless nat twenty ever. Though it makes sense. The, the fucking, the son of the taxman keeps a close eye on the pouches he has. Sure, I follow. Why not?
I follow as well.
No, I staked out this candy beforehand, goddammit.
You can't remember shit, but you remember that I clutched my candy like it was the last thing.
Levic can't remember shit. Oh no, that's right.
Yeah, I can't remember shit, but I got my candy.
Double that ones.
Um, what are we rolling?
Uh, perception check.
It's, it's wisdom, wisdom. It's eleven.
Eleven?
Fifteen.
Fifteen?
I rolled a nineteen, so it's almost a nub.
But it's fifteen.
Fifteen.
It's gone.
That one?
Yes. I've got his.
You absolutely have your book. Everyone except General has their candy.
I'm gonna start crying.
That's a very fair reaction.
Here, have some of the candy from my second pouch.
Because I'm rich and can do that.
Roll the section.
I start crying too and I give him my bag of candy. So it's, it's like, how, like, are you?
What are the odds that one of the people that ordered that twenty grabbed his bag of candy?
I was actually joking, but that's a pretty good.
We're gonna find out.
That was the joke about the second pouch.
Let's put all the candy together and then they're hiding up deep in the. Well, if somebody grabbed his bag, you're like, oh, by the way, you dropped this and, you know.
That's not how taxes, it's not yours anymore. It belongs to the state.
Uh, one, two. So these fifty fifty chance evens are odds. Actually, you did pick up his candy.
Jen, why are you crying?
Cause I lost my candy.
This candy?
And Luke just had you over your bag of candy.
Wipes snot on his sleeve, grabs the bag.
Thank you.
Double knot, double knot. Now about these, this crossbow.
Never forget the double knot as long as you live. There, there will nev, you are now capable of tying a double knot.
There's a small note in the top corner of the screen.
General will remember that.
Add that, add that to your character sheet. You are now capable of tying a double knot, don't matter the situation.
So we're gonna do like what we do at Halloween? Are we gonna like just like, pull out, pull, pull out all the candy and like see who wants this and who wants this and who wants this, wants this?
Well, this is not, this is not Snickers and Mars bars here. These are funny shaped treats.
Yeah, these are bespoke candies. They're custom made, not mass produced.
They have jewels on them?
No.
No, bespoke is, uh, custom made. Yes.
A wizard did help him make.
Bedjeweled or bedazzled.
It could be bedjeweled.
Are you bedazzled? God damn it.
Bedazzled. Okay.
If it's not, you're not doing it right.
Fed's on where she stored it.
Honestly, Horrible's in a safe. The fact that she's a child, Horrible's in a safe makes it more likely that she would, I've got this extra storage area.
Stop. That is your one procession right there. Oh, the sticky beard comment made it so much worse.
Oh god!
No, we know what you were quoting. We also know what, uh, another thing that is called a beard.
I was trying to come up with something so out there that it would move us on and you, you snuck that one by all of us. Oh, oh.
It works on so many levels.
I need to plug in my laptop.
But seriously, where did they get a? Where did the Harris family get a crossbow though? Seriously? Did they make it themselves? Does the town have a bowyer?
No.
What's a what? A what?
A bowyer.
Someone who makes bows.
A bowyer.
B O W Y E R. Bowyer.
That's right. We know a bunch of obscure shit on this podcast.
I don't know why I know that. I don't know where I learned it.
None of us know how to do our taxes, but we know what a bowyer and a furrier is.
What are you talking about? We, we know how to do our taxes.
Furrier and a ferrier.
Uh huh.
Oh, those, those are like, um, horses.
Furriers, horse shoes.
Neither one of those deal with fucking horses.
That's the furrier. Or the furry hats.
Anyways, um, we are the nerds that the word nerd was, was invented for.
We are just.
We were nerds back when that shit got you swirled. Never got me swirly because I couldn't get my head to do it.
Never got you swirly because I couldn't lift you.
Most swirlies do them all just straight up lifting them up, don't they?
You can do a ted stand, you can do a swirly.
You can dodge a wrench, you can dodge a ball.
What?
Anyways, wrenching us back into this thing again. This is what a real home game is like for all of you listening who think, man, how do they always stay on plot? The answer is editing.
Well, none of us, those that answers, they're professionals.
Yeah.
Yeah, either they're professionals or editing.
Or they have a producer who's just there with a light, clicky, 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 clicky.
You all are air pieces compared on games.
Uh, yeah, you all hear a deep, deep kind of rumbling growl that more goes through you than actually hits your ear. Coming from the doorway. That.
Coming from his mom or?
Uh, presumably.
She's fool momma dragon right now.
Yeah, it is that.
Mom's about the wild shape.
It's that thing that many people have to tell Saint Peter about, like, so I heard this noise before I died. Yeah, we hear that a lot. Just.
Oh shit, there goes the planet.
But yeah, uh, that deep noise is indeed coming from Kava.
Luke will walk up being an idiot. If you want a piece of candy.
Um.
Cause that low a noise, that's probably her tummy bump.
Yeah, you get within a foot of her and like even your childlike brain realizes, oh, that's not her tummy. As you see, the scales are like starting to rise.
Okay, supposed to. Are they supposed to do that? I thought the scales, I'd fuck, hold on, can your scales do that?
No. Um, but you do see past her to, um, uh, Martin Jobin. Bringing, uh, Old Man Jobin into the tavern.
Now is Martin, which one is Martin? Is that the one who's been stepping out with the Harris girl?
Uh, no, Martin Jobin is the current head of the Jobin family. Uh, he is the second oldest male.
So is this like when, like, was that when, like, when the nurse tried to take the baby from, after, like, where I held her from the first time? Because I don't understand what happened.
No, that, that noise didn't come from your throat. That came directly from your ovaries. Save your pity for the week. Um, and yeah, you can just see him being dragged in. Let me go. I'll go kill them damn birds. I kill them. I kill them. And then you just see a hand. Come from outside your field of vision and cover his mouth. You almost kill anyone in my tavern. I kill people in my tavern. Puts him on a table with that one hand.
Is he still hold, having the arrow?
Yep.
I'm sorry, I just got a bit from this. You'll not kill people in my tavern. He's on side. He's inside.
Don't worry, we'll kill you.
Um, but yeah. It is, but it's still funny. Um, yeah, you all watch and listen as, um, you know, Old Man Jobin is seen to. Things die out outside and your parents, uh, come to reclaim each of you. Uh, as you each exit, under the careful watch of both of your parents, the fairgrounds are wrecked. Carts have been overturned. Uh, there's merchandise scattered about. There are scars in the, in the landscape. scars in the yu- in the landscaping, but there are no bodies. There is just that oppressive feel of a a thing that was meant to be like the highlight of your year is now different in a way you can't really define.
Missed the pie contest. Or did it get cancelled?
Are you actually asking your mom that?
Yes, I'm s- I'm fine. Fine, we're fine.
Thought that was day two.
We will see what happens. Come along. That's very good. Come along.
Bye, my Kava.
Um.
Mom, how did the Harris's get a crossbow? We don't have a bowyer and that's got some really complicated mechanisms and they're very expensive.
That is a very excellent question, one which will be explored by the town council.
Do we have to pick those out, Dad?
Uh, you're not there. I got, I got you coming in later. Um, yeah. The next day is subdued. People are not coming en masse to the festival grounds anymore. Um, who here is going to try and get there?
Well, not letting my sister go alone.
So the the entirety of the group. Um, there are significantly less children here than there were yesterday. Uh, many of the peddlers have already left. This is a week long thing.
Is the wizard's cart oddly untouched? I feel like even in a brawl, W was.
Oh yeah, no, the wizard's cart is wholly undamaged and the wizard is still just stamp. Shuffle, 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 stamp. Uh, yeah. Yeah, that's.
No, not Candyman.
Uh, Candyman is gone, like just dipped. The, one of the general peddlers is trying to repeat, repair a repeal. He's trying to repeal. He's trying to repair uh, one of his uh, wheels. Uh, Crusk is out there just like helping to hold up the wagon as he makes these repairs. Uh, you also see several other people out there. At least one of each of your parents left before you did this morning. Uh, that's because most of you have a parent on the town council. Uh, your dad left early. Uh, or yeah, General Namira's dad left early. Um, I'm just going through everyone in order at this point. Um, Rogarth, uh, your mom left early. Uh, Levick, your mother left early. Luke, your dad left early. And Runusk, your father left.
Levick, your mom is never gonna let you out of your, her sight of my baby.
But yeah.
Yeah, yeah. She was probably like, who did this? Who did this? I'll kill him.
Probably just gonna say, you know what? Both these families need to disappear. The entire family.
No one will ever see me coming.
You just see her on the ceiling like, baby?
Just hanging from a cloud.
Luke's dad, where will we substitute the income? I'll pay triple taxes. By vote, we disappear the entire family.
What families? I don't see them anywhere on my tax record. Terrible plague. Um, she would be actually in the town, in the meeting hall, which is really just where the town's communal goods are stored.
So both are here.
No, your dad's there with you.
Your dad was at the town meeting.
No, no, my dad, your mom.
Yeah.
Um, they've left before we go.
Yes.
Your dad is home.
Uh, rumbling into town is a um, cart that each of you recognizes. Uh, on it is, you know, on the back of it is a portable forge, um, just kind of being tugged along. Uh, yeah, Danny, go ahead and introduce yourself. Uh, and uh, tell us what your character looks like.
Oh geez. I'm a young, young girl dwarf. I've got red and blonde hair, all in in a braid. I'm wearing kind of a dress with a lever, with a kind of lever leather cover.
With a lever cover.
For a dwarf, I'd buy it.
Yeah, right. That seems more a gnome thing.
No, like a smock that you could loosen up when it's, when you're done working and then.
Okay.
I have a bright, bright green eye.
Cool. Uh, and your name?
Amber.
Uh, uh, so Amber, you have been out of town with your parents for the last um, two weeks. Um, your father had to make a run to a nearby village to help out there, uh, sell some of his wares, things like that. It it's a journey you all take periodically. There being two blacksmiths in this town. Work is kind of seen to very easily, so it makes income a little bit difficult for both families and since both of your parents are in the trades, it's become a just yearly pilgrimage. You go like make a circuit of several villages, uh, and actually are one of the only people here to have gone to uh, the local city. Uh, da da da, give me a second as I go through my notes. Um, of um, do, of Arena. Um, you know, this time you took longer, which was really kind of grating to you because you didn't get to be here for opening ceremonies at the Harvest Fair. You were supposed to, but then something happened with the wagon. Uh, so you find yourself rolling into this with that child like, it's the fair, it's the fair, it's the fair, it's the.
What?
Your friends are gathered in the green, like kids you've known your entire life. Uh, all of you see Amber's, you know, parents. Wagon just.
Here, ho- hold that thing up. I'll just put this back in place and, oh, well, look who made it. You missed the candy and the fire.
And the fight.
We're not the pie contest yet, hopefully.
Fire and fight.
Oh yeah, we we got to beat up Topo when he, when we were swimming the other day.
Do you still have my teeth?
Yes.
Two for you, two for me.
Mom, Dad, can I jump off?
Uh, your dad's looking around at the, like, the chaos here. Uh, your dad is on the town council. Both of her parents are dwarfs.
Oh, what is her dad? What is your dad's name?
Uh.
Um, Gregor.
Mr. Gregor, Mr. Gregor, there's a town ma- there's a meeting going on at the meeting area for the council.
One of the Harris's shot Old Man Jobin.
Oh, this is going to be a bad thing.
Actually, did did we ever, did did anyone actually see one of the Harris's take the shot?
No, it doesn't matter how true the statement is.
Well, no, no, I I just wanted to make sure before I respond. Well, we don't know that it was, we don't know it was one of the Harris's.
Go ahead and jump off.
Oh no!
Laila, take everything back to the homestead, make sure everything is alright. Yeah, yeah, I'll do that.
I thought that was actually a German accent for a half second.
Actually, it was going for kind of Dutch Swedish.
For a very brief moment, it was Amish for the dad.
Yeah, I I'm kind of going for Dutch, so should sound kind of Amish. You're Dutch. Yeah, Dutch Swedish, a little bit of Minnesotan.
Don't you know?
Mm-hmm. Welcome to Minnesota. We used to have a black person here and then Prince died.
Yeah, Prince lived, Prince lived in Minnesota.
I didn't know that.
Trust me, he was as surprised as you are, I'm sure.
So it was all of Minnesota.
Are you sure I'm from here?
One day I really do need to take that tour.
Didn't your mom, it's Grace, know that's?
No, that's Elvis. No, she did go to his house.
What's the place called?
Grace.
No, that's Elvis's. No, she's talking about Prince's house. It's just called Prince's House.
Well, Prince has been castled though.
Prince lived in a house, very large house, where you are not allowed to have your cellphone.
We don't know yet.
Well, that's why we're trying to fix everything. Come on.
Uh, yeah, your dad jumps off and makes his way to the storage. He's a medium sized, yeah, doors are medium sized. He's like five foot.
Yeah, I got the, I got the feeling that Luke and Jen have been arguing over this all morning. It had to have been the Harris's. Where did they get the crossbow? Who cares? They had a crossbow. No, this makes no sense.
Um.
Who else would shoot our Old Man Jobin?
Who wouldn't shoot Old Man Jobin?
Maybe it was Granny Max. You never know.
She didn't work a crossbow.
I don't think she would need to. I think she would just curse him.
That's a pretty good point.
We don't know what she does. She might have sold the crossbow.
I dare you to say that to her face next time you see her.
As a matter of fact, on on the tax roll, she is listed as witch, question mark.
You all debate this uh, for several hours. Cleaning up, um, before some people start filtering in. Um, it is like, you can tell this is a group of people trying to still carry on the festival.
Yeah.
But at the same time, this is like, um, should we still be doing this? Uh, before you see Tama Harris.
The girl?
Is that the girl stepping out with the Jobin boy?
Uh huh, walking uh, kind of cautiously out. Uh, anyone who would like to can make me an insight check uh, with disadvantage.
How old are the Jobin boy and the Harris?
Uh, fourteen and fifteen respectively.
So old enough that we would, is young enough that we would know them, but not old enough to, or not young enough that we would be like, hey, Tim.
Old enough that you. Exactly.
Like from time to time?
Yeah. Insight with disadvantage.
Well, that's a fifteen and eighteen, so twelve.
Okay, uh, this is gonna be a DC ten.
Got it.
Got it, got it. With disadvantage. No.
Ten.
Uh, disadvantage is you roll two D twenty and you take the lower. Straight zero. Uh, it's, what'd you get? Eight, failed it, failed it, passed it, passed it, passed it.
Twelve.
Uh, sweet, so it's literally three in a row that passed. Like that. Uh, she's wearing the same clothes she was wearing yesterday, which not super odd, you know, most of you only have like two or three sets of clothes.
Sure I am too.
Uh, but these are for, like, they they have seen a lot more damage than and all of you kind of recall her not really being caught up in the fight, so much is shuffled off it. She also has what looks like the beginning of a bruise on one cheek and very notably no shoes.
Oh, 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 the family done this.
Uh, she just, she just kind of has that hollow eyed look as she shuffles along.
Out of character? That bitch done dumped into.
Uh, cool, you go up to her. Ye- yes, Namira. I'm, I'm perfectly fine. Everything is perfect. And she puts that hand on your shoulder and that kind of I'm trying to be reassuring, but I'm adding far too much pressure, like not enough to hurt. But like, I have locked my forearm to keep my hand from squeezing harder. So like, all the muscle on my forearm is standing out while my hand is just very gentle somehow, like.
There's no pressure on you, but you could see the forearm is going boom.
Yeah, like all of the veins are visible. Like, everything is just fine. Like, oh, oh, that's not natural.
Oh, everything is not fine.
You want some candy?
No, you you keep candy and just kind of pat you on the head. Start shuffling off again.
I'm gonna run for mama.
Okay.
Where's her shoes? Where's her shoes?
You didn't uh, make the check, remember?
Oh, yeah. Careful, be careful, I love you, buh-bye. I'm five.
You're running for your mom?
I'm five.
Yeah.
Not a war tank. Poor Crusk. Alright, I've got it up. Go ahead and slot it in.
Duck, Crusk would be fine. You mean Runusk? Rogarth.
Working together for stuff. Okay, I've got it up. Go ahead and slot it in. Luke.
I see, light! Aaron? Oh, another reference, another reference just for that.
I'm just watching because I probably just the axle.
Just like.
Order the left, order the left.
He's been, he's been the one guy that's watching big shoulder. Okay, I see where he's got it. Look, he's not holding it up, that's weird.
Um, yeah, you just see her shuffling off. You go to get your mom. Uh, what do you tell her?
Uh, Tama, right? Mom, mom, uh, I think something happened.
We're in a meeting.
I thought dad was in the meeting.
Oh, that's right. Dad is in the meeting.
Uh, mom, I I think something happened to Tama. She got yanked away from the brawl last night, but her her clothes are all ruined and she's got a bruise forming on the face and she's got no shoes. I think the family kicked her out or beat her up or something like that or.
Take me there right now. Yeah, it, you're not, like, she's holding like the back of your shirt, like.
Every one step out of every four I make actually touches ground.
He's like. You're, you are literally.
It's like a searchhound.
This is not the first time she's.
He even makes the noises.
Every intersection, stop.
I feel so attacked right now.
You're not being attacked, but you are catching some strays. I'm sorry about that.
I was like, fuck.
Find, hey Megan, find the baby.
I found her in like two minutes though.
Yeah, you you leave your mom to her, who just kind of walks up to her, puts two hands on her and stops her. Turns her to look at her and as soon as she does, just break tears, crying, collapse. Go to your friends.
Gone. He obviously did something wrong. Tam is crying. Let's get out of here. Oh, right.
You just hear Luke. Are all of you just standing there while? Holds it up while Luke has just vanished instead of putting the wheel on this thing.
Actually, yes. Once Luke took off.
Luke, Luke, Luke's gone.
In in perfect twin symmetry. I'll, I'll, once Luke is a question mark in the air. Um, I'm gonna like try to help uh, Rogar support it while Nigeria is.
I just like peeled your beer.
I am counting the remaining money that I got to, that I get to keep since my dad didn't ask for it back. Well, I've got this coin left. I've got this coin left. I've got this coin left.
Well, now this person just leads to a question. Our tiefling, we all know that the idiots online tried to say that orcs were actually a veiled reference for black people. Our tieflings a veiled reference to the Jewish people.
No.
Tell me more about the, how you're counting these coins.
Really, tax collector son?
If you can sing that entire song.
Honestly, there are times where I think to myself, I need to learn it.
You learn magic.
Shuffle, shuffle. Tell me more.
Okay, now, in the future, it it is official. The next time I run a campaign in a fantasy setting, all spells have to be cast to be added.
Say what? I don't know.
No, five silver.
No, ten silver. It's a, it's always a ten up.
It was the electric conspiracy.
I'm rich bitch.
It's a ten up system. Um.
But yeah.
Yeah, uh, all of you, after a few more minutes here, see the whole of the town council exit the uh, the hall. And they start making their way through the green together, heading towards a destination.
Are they heading towards the Harris household or the Harris farm?
Uh, yes, they are.
I'll start trotting along in my mom's shadow, trying to get going.
Are we, are we double?
Baby's not making a note.
Sorry.
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna start going over my dad's, try and tell him Babby's first conspiracy theory. Getting started early.
You're gonna end up, you're gonna be talking to your dad?
I'm gonna try to write him a note because you're not supposed to talk during town meetings. This is probably still a meeting technically, but I can pass him a note.
Okay, so fo- following, following, go. They are stone faced.
Okay, something is going on and everybody's telling me we're destroying things. The town council's going, you know what? I'm just gonna see what happens myself. It's obviously people are lying to me.
I'm actually going to stay and keep trying to fix things.
Fuck you very much. That ruined my plan. I was gonna be like Elder Tagora on your back and be like, let's go.
No, I'm staying to fix things.
Alright, what else?
I'm gonna go wherever my mom.
Cool. Uh, all of you follow along as um.
Uh, wasn't his dad the one in the council? So where where where's your mom at?
Oh, yeah, your mom's back at your farm.
Oh, she didn't come to?
No.
She just let me wander off to the?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're a latchkey kid. Enjoy it.
You're, you're a rather large uh, size child, like.
I figured she came to the thing with pies.
Nope, she's.
Probably still finishing pies.
Yeah, like, listen, I love you and everything. I have a belt to maintain here. And there's only two ways to maintain it. Either A, I win the competition, or B, I've gotta put it to practice, honey.
It's like, son, I love you, but the pies come first.
Son, I love you.
I understand.
Son, I love you and I enjoyed. Son, I love you and I enjoyed making you. And if you don't get out of this kitchen, I'll need to make a replacement.
I will make a new pie. It won't win awards, but it'll be there.
All right, in that case, I'm just gonna follow.
Tell me why, Mrs. Love it. Tell me why.
All right.
Tell me.
Suddenly, everyone uh who was going to compete is just not there, but there are so many more pies.
Unobtrusive as possible, so nobody, none of the adults think to tell me to go away.
Fair. Stealth, stealth by silence.
Our mom knows we're there.
I don't know that she knows everything yet. This is fair. I am still learning that lesson.
So everyone but. Yeah, everyone but Rogar. Rogar, all of your friends leave. Just fucking leave you there fixing shit. This is the story. You get the distinct impression this will be the rest of your life. All right, well, they've all fucked up. I guess I'll fix this. All right, this is your final decision on this. We're not backtracking it again. We'll make this decision.
You wanna go, you can go. I'm gonna fix this so I can get pies.
Cool. Uh, yeah.
I mean, dad hasn't put the armor on yet. It's okay.
Uh, yes, they do head to the Harris farm. Uh, the Harris farm is tied for the largest farm in the village.
Jobin farm?
Yes, it is also, you know, depending on who you ask, the oldest farm.
And depending on who else you ask, the Jobin farm?
Correct. I think you're seeing the nature. We founded this town. We founded this town. We founded this town. We founded this town. We will find your body.
No, I will find yours.
We will find yours.
We're going to found it. We're going to found a new graveyard.
We're. Going to fill it.
Not a lot of visual jokes for this audio format.
Right? Uh, one day we'll move past that. Joke, really Rebecca. Yes, the uh, the Harris farm is extremely large. And there are no less than six people hanging out those front gates. Amongst them, Thomas Harris or Harris, the eldest member of the Harris family sitting on an old rocking chair with a iron sword and iron axe sitting on his lap.
Question, uh, the the eldest Harris, is he just the current patriarch or is he like Old Man Jobin and just fucking?
Old Man Jobin fucking agent and the current patriarch. He has refused to let go of this family.
Eh, well, I'm, I've got some auspicious visitors.
Uh, your father is the one to kind of break from the group.
Oh.
Thomas.
Oh, I think we was close enough for someone over here to call me.
For the sake of the audio format, they couldn't see who you were pointing at? The audience has no idea whose father broke away from it. Oh, I'm sorry. Uh, yes, thank you. Thank you for that. Uh, yes, Luke's father, your father breaks away from it. Do call me on that because I'm very much getting used to this. Uh, Luke's father breaks away. Um,
uh, yeah, I didn't think we was quite close enough for anyone in the esteemed council to be referring to me by my first name. Not of course with the, oh, no seats available for someone as, uh, what, how did you put it? Uh, season as me.
What just happened?
Thomas Harris is anti-government based as fuck.
No, the rest of the town basically gonna be on the council, you know, integral.
Is Jobin on the council?
Probably not.
Thomas, we've come to talk to you about what happened yesterday. Oh, I have no doubt where those
bloodthirsty Jobins just decided they was gonna up and attack us.
And your family had nothing to do with it? Now.
You said she was a Harris, right?
Hmm, that's true, she is, sorry.
Just the 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 boy's on the Jobin.
Yes, the boy is on the Jobin. Um, the going theory is that someone from your clan shot their Jobin.
Now, I invite this esteemed council to look around and tell me if you see a crossbow in sight. Now, don't get me wrong, we are by far the largest farm.
I should have looked over it.
But you'll notice that.
Two acres smaller than Jobin.
We do not own a crossbow and no one in town seems to make crossbows. In fact, there is only one crossbow in this entire township that I personally am aware of and it is not held by Harris. In fact, if I recall, it is in fact held by none other than the husband of a member of this esteemed council. Isn't that right? Miss Wasnick.
Um, Levick, you remember that your father does indeed have a crossbow.
Question. Both of his parents are gnomes, right? The crossbow bolt that hit Jobin was a standard, medium sized crossbow bolt, right?
Possibly. You didn't get a good look.
Assuming it hasn't been thrown away since.
What precisely are you accusing my husband of?
Oh, no.
I would not dare to accuse any member of this council for their killing anything. After all, the council is here for the benefit of us all, which leads me to my next point. Why don't you all just mosey on off my lands? And go ask that fool Jobin what he did to anger someone with a crossbow. Because you will not be finding one here. And unless you would like to force your way onto my lands and with that he moves his hands from the arms of the rocking chair to the hilts of his weapons, you will not be coming on to them.
The reason mommy's like, Luke speaks without thinking. I was just gonna say.
But you just said that they were free to look around, see if they could find a crossbow. He said that exact same thing about a minute ago.
Actually, yeah, yeah, goes from, you know, squeezing mommy's leg to chucking his arm.
Oh, yeah, Luke realizes he was not supposed to talk.
Consider that invitation that he just stares into with that old man stare revoked.
Writing through mental picture. Oh, okay. Back to being quiet. Tried to look through the tall grass to.
And here we are going to go ahead and find out how this plays out next week. Uh, I would like to thank all of you who support us on Patreon. We do a lovely thing called Leftovers every week where uh, some, several of the players, mostly at this point, uh, Webb and John get together and we talk about what happened last session. And yeah, what we're feeling, where characters should go, what we think's gonna happen next. So thank you for supporting us on that. Thank you for listening to our podcast and we will see you in next time.